Let the record show that Ted's obviously feeling better and is joining us this afternoon. Welcome Ted.
Present.
Okay. So we will reconvene, I'm sure that our Commissioner will join us shortly to the September 1st, 2016 Planning Commission meeting, and here he comes right now. So next up is RNE Investments, APN 54-014-015.
She's in the restroom.
So this is 147 acre parcel that is on the other side of Highway 4, north side of Highway 4, across from the Copper Town Square. It's presently proposed for resource production. The existing general plan shows it as natural resources agricultural land.
So you're saying that Melinda Hoff is here and in the-
She's in the restroom, she's coming right now.
Okay. Ms. Hoff? Where if you'd like to discuss your request, we're ready for you.
Well, good afternoon, I hope everyone had a good lunch. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm Melinda Hoff, I'm a real estate broker, and I'm representing my clients, RNE Investments, and property located at 100 Hudson Road. It consists of 144.4 acres located on the corner of Highway 4 and Hudson Road in Copperopolis. It's currently ag-preserved, zoned A1, proposed to be designated resource production. We're requesting subject property be designated community center on the general plan. A little of the history, RNE purchased the property in 2005 for the specific purpose of future development. Prior to completing the purchase, they did their due diligence with the appropriate entities of Calaveras County. Way back then, according to Planning Department, the property was zoned ag and pending it coming out of Williamson Act, it would become A1 general ag, which it is now, and could be split into 20 acre parcels without a general plan amendment. The Planning Department also checked archeological maps and said that it was good for development and it showed a low sensitivity area. The subject property came out of the Williamson Act in March of 2005. At that time, Public Works advised us road level of service was a D and we'd have to bring up to acceptable standards. Since that time, there is now a turn lane and the level has been brought up. Per CCWD, there's water, it does have a meter and a line on the property, which of course would have to be upgraded prior to any development. Fire protection was discussed and the fact that there's a large pond on the property was a positive factor. The next step was to meet with the Copperopolis Community Plan Group, which I did, and it was agreed at that time that the subject property would be designated master plan community. 2005 draft map came out and property was designated as such, but never formally accepted. The map was then submitted to the County Planning Commission. We completed the purchase of the property based on those conditions. And then I would like to say fast forward, but of course it's been anything but fast because here I am again asking for the land designation community center. The subject property is adjacent to the Copperopolis Town Square with community center designation. It borders the Diamond 20 subdivision with access off of a state highway, Highway 4. As a real estate professional, this is the highest and best use of the property. It just makes sense looking into the future with improvements, it meets qualifications of services and infrastructure. Due to the topography, power lines, waterway, and outcroppings, the 144-plus acres of usable land will be cut down significantly, taking away potential for high density yet meeting needs for commercial. The general plan is the roadmap for the next 20 years or so. Copperopolis is slated for the most growth, yet we have inadequate numbers of areas designated for commercial growth. Looking to the future, the owners have a vision, over the years, we've collaborated with RRM Designs on the project, and I believe they're the ones that wrote the mission statement for the current general plan. We have not submitted a plan as of date, but the time has not been right, and plans do become stagnant. And then that's a waste of time and money for everyone. So thank you for taking this into consideration and please grant us our request. Thank you so much, any questions?
Any questions to Ms. Hoff right now?
Yeah, the CCWD line, that's just for a single residence, isn't it?
Oh yes, and it would definitely have to be brought up. It is larger though than a single family for some reason was my understanding, but it would still have to be improved.
There's no wastewater facilities there?
No, that would have to be addressed along with the actual plan.
Is there access to sewer in that area?
Not at this time, it would be, if it came down from Town Square, it'd have to be bore-drilled under the highway major costs and time to do that.
So Town Square has sewer?
Well, it does and it doesn't.
What does that mean?
Well, we talked about that previously this morning about how it, right now, it's on a sort of temporary system. The pipelines are in place, but rather than the connection directly to the sewage treatment plant, they've got to pump it from a holding tank and then truck it. And that's where ultimately the line through Little John Road would provide to that connection, but the scale of development hasn't quite reached the level where that could support that level of infrastructure improvement.
So when I'm looking at this and she's talking about commercial designation, if we were to back out on that map a little bit, is that the two reds there, is that the commercial designation currently? And then the purple's your commercial center?
Yeah, this is the historic area of Copperopolis, this is the community center which allows commercial and residential. This is the area that we just determined would be designated for mixed use with up to 580 units. These are two sort of existing commercial sites on the highway, actually they're on Rock Creek Road and the frontage road here, so it's not direct access onto the highway, but they're existing commercial.
So she was indicating that the road service level was a D, do we know what that is now?
I don't, it's something we would analyze when a project would come forward. And this is one of the accesses into, one of the 20, Diamond 20, whichever one it is.
The two pieces shown as commercial center, the one by the lake, the upper one, that's bailed out, correct? I mean, there's industrial park there.
Mm-hmm.
The other one right along Highway 4, there's nothing there, correct?
No, Kelly, there's nothing there, I believe Dick still owns that property if I'm not mistaken.
Dick McCarty owns it.
And the subject property is the one right across the street with the little purple mark, that's the pond I was referring to.
Any other questions to Ms. Hoff right now?
Well, there is one house on the property, right?
Yes, there's a single white mobile home that needs to be removed.
Thank you, we may have some more questions later.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address this request for a land use designation change? Penso.
My name is Dave Haley, representing Castlin Cook. Sorry I got in a little bit late, but I assume it's the property on the other side of Highway 4 from the Town Square.
Yes.
We object to changing that land use designation into anything but what it is. The Copper Community Plan Committee twice reviewed that issue and decided to make the Copper Community Plan boundary at Highway 4 because they didn't want Highway 4 to become a community collector road by allowing commercial uses and other uses on the other side of Highway 4. So that's one issue. Second issue is adding to the competitive nature of the Copper Cove at Little John Road, the old historical district and the Town Square unduly would add an unduly competitive disadvantage to those projects in order for them to develop in an orderly fashion. So because of those two issues, we object to a change in land use.
Mr. Haley? Do you recall whether there was an issue that surfaced regarding Caltrans, were that to be developed on the other side of the highway?
I have not personally spoken to Caltrans, but there was an issue of discussion of an overpass in the Copper Community Plan Committee. I don't know if that issue was brought forward by Caltrans. The main issue was creating a uses that would make cross-traffic on Highway 4 worse than what it could be.
Thank you, anyone else?
Tom Infasino, just to reiterate, this is another one of those parcels where the number of acres and the CC designation of 20 units per acre is kind of blows up the projection. So if there was some sort of way to do, as we suggested with some of the others, some sort of unit limitation or some square footage limitation or something like that, that would be more appropriate than the blanket CC designation, that might be advisable.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Ms. Hoff, do you have anything else you'd like to add before we talk amongst ourselves here and come up with a recommendation?
I do agree with what Mr. Infasino just said, that I believe because of the topography and the nature of it, we would not be looking for a real high density. So thank you.
So, hold on, please. On the community plan, that was discussed in those meetings as far as if they would, they did or did not?
That's when they were working on the Copperopolis Community Plan in itself, and I really was opposed to the borders that they set, the perimeters, because it was specific to someone's best interest to keep it all within that area. But being, it is a main highway, where else do you go that it's always on one side of the road and not on the other? And besides that, there is an industrial park and commercial along that same corridor within a mile of each other. So I don't feel that that should be looked at that way, and we are working on the general plan right now, not a Copperopolis community plan.
Discussion with the Commissioners, you know, I can just like start out that, again, I think approving a request like this is way too premature. We don't have the projected demand for this kind of, or level of development. This parcel's been natural resource lands recently, well not so recently, out of the Williamson Act and it's zone agriculture. Again, I think that approving a request like this is way premature and again puts the burden of the assessment of that type of development on the county and opens us up for legal challenge about approving, you know, lots of development that we can't show that we have demand for.
Peter, what's the pre-entitlement on this one?
Well, this would be, as we sort of talked before, sort of a generalization that right now it's, as Commissioner McLaughlin pointed out, it's planned for, current general plan calls for natural resources, it's zoned A1, and this would be sort of, you know, jump-starting a development proposal that we really haven't seen and sort of determining that this is an appropriate location without really having analysis of the site to make that determination. In general, if we were looking at a fairly significant demand and increase for more commercial land, I could see that this might be, just based on its location, near the core of Copperopolis, the commercial center. Although putting it on the north side of the highway does create some additional challenges. We've seen, you know, other communities with the state highway running right through the middle of it with challenges, you know, here in San Andreas, for example. Be a little different story because it's a limited access highway as opposed to, you know, a historic main street that's become a state highway. There are some potential problems with, you know, creating additional cross-traffic across the highway, particularly as growth continues and highway traffic on 4 will increase over time as well. So to get back to your question, you know, the comment pre-entitlement was that we don't really know what's proposed here. It's designated currently as natural resources, and it just seems a little, as far as I say, premature to designate it for commercial center at this point in time.
So I guess the part that I'm struggling with is that they, according to Mrs. Hoff, they went up and did research on purchasing this property for the purpose and intent of development for commercial, is that correct? How long ago was that?
Eleven years.
Again, it wouldn't preclude them, or from, in 11 years of seeking a general plan amendment.
Except for the economy crashing.
Can you come up to the microphone? Right, I'm just saying, you know, nothing has precluded you from this point or from this point moving forward. Should the timing and the demand actually materialize, as I mentioned before, of coming forward with that proposal to the county for a general plan amendment and zoning.
Okay, I agree, and it probably would have moved forward if we hadn't have suffered the downturn that we did in, you know, later 2000. 147 acres though, it came out of the Williamson Act 11 years ago, you know, so it's full value on the taxes, but what do you really do with 147 acres on a prime state highway these days? It's not really appropriate to be resource production either, because unless you want another marijuana farm, maybe, I don't know. But I'm just joking about that, sorry, it's probably a sore subject right now with a lot of people. But with that being said, I don't see that resource production is a prime, you know, designation for that property either. It's not like we're looking at 1,400 acres. We had six cows on it and they liked Kelly's grass better than mine, so I don't, you know...
I guess this is just one of those situations where I struggle, where I've talked about people buy property with an intent, they do their homework, they do their research, and it changes on them.
Yeah, I understand that, but the intent, but they also bought the property with natural resource land use designation, which doesn't scream commercial.
Coming to the county looking for future purposes. If they hadn't done their homework, I get it, but the fact that you go in and do your homework and then you get flip-flopped and someone's invested all their dollars into that-
I don't think, I don't see this as flip-flopping, this is actually consistency, it's not flip-flopping.
Well, it is when they did their homework and they were told it would work out.
Well, I don't know that they were told it would work out either. I don't want to be argumentative, but, you know, we don't know, we weren't there.
Well, the provision of water would have to be made. The existing line will accommodate no more than one house. I know that because it goes through our property. There is no provision for wastewater here. There are access issues here with highway and the crossing. There really isn't any commercial development on that side of the highway south of Rock Creek Road. It's just an empty lot with a sign in it, the southernmost red portion. And, you know, the fact that this commission determined that Appendix B was not appropriate, which would have imposed draconian costs to move out of resource production and is no longer part of the draft plan, and the fact that if it goes to resource production, it can be changed with a general plan amendment without having to comply with the costs that would have been imposed under Appendix B, leads me to reluctantly conclude that the Planning Department recommendation is probably correct.
Cover all the points already up. I agree.
I struggle with it only because of the research that was done, being in the industry that I'm in, I know that I take the time to go to the county and research before my client's purchase, so that's a heartache for me. I was making notes on the road service, the water, those things did have weight on this, those things can all be corrected during the plan approval process, but your point about Appendix B being removed was a good point. I do, when you say the development on both sides of the highway for commercial, that's extremely common, extremely common in this county. Commercial development is on both sides of the highway in most towns in this entire county. And further up the highway, there is commercial development on the other side of the highway where there's storage units. So only because I know that I've done the type of homework and then to have something changed at the county and what was potential, I'm a little irritated and going to stand down for a minute.
Ted?
I think agreeing with the point you were making of it being premature. In fact, this whole project seems like it might be premature for the next general plan. That's quite a ways off. It doesn't seem like there's, it's not a bad location for which you might have in mind, but there isn't, there just isn't any demand at this point.
So it looks like we've got a majority for recommending or tentative approval of the staff recommendation, is that correct?
I think so.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all right, so we are moving on to Duda Limited Partnership. 61-025-027 and 035 and 037.
I'm trying to look at the map, it's not coming up properly yet, the right box is checked, so I'm not sure what's going on here. Bear with me for a minute, see if it reloads properly. Oh, I see what's going on. Had the wrong box clicked, sorry about that. So this is an area that is pretty much surrounded by existing development within the Copperopolis area. It covers all this area along Black Creek. This is the future school site owned by the Mark Twain Union School District, continues on down, covers all of this area here. This is a very-
It looks a lot more than three parcels.
It's 27th to 35th.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's-
So it's that whole area?
It's a whole area, all of that, yeah. So it's very steep, you know, along this side, there are a number of rare plants, it's very sensitive habitat. Access is pretty challenging, this is the part of Copper Cove Drive where it drops off pretty steeply into the canyon. The only area that I really felt was sort of suitable for development was this area here, and it might actually need to be brought back a little bit from the creek itself. But, you know, there's no access anywhere along this backside, so any access would need to either be through, you know, lots there or across the creek. It's just a very, very challenging area. And this is one of those, I think, where a natural resource designation is just appropriate or resource production is appropriate as a natural resource area. It's really not suitable for, you know, farming or timber or, you know, agricultural purposes or the traditional way of resource production, but the natural resource value of this site's probably very high, and just the costs and impacts associated with development of that area, it just would be very, very challenging to develop. This area here, which is relatively flat and away from the stream zone that has some of the, the native plant habitat that's fairly critical, suggested that could be developed in the same pattern that we see with the other area. This is the low-density residential, one to 60 units per acre here. This is the real residential, which is one unit per acre.
Is Anita Butler here? Somebody representing Duda Limited Partnership? Is there anyone else that would like to discuss this land use request? Sure, come on up and-
Peter, the land directly across at the corner of Black Creek Park, there, right? It's white, on the, would be the northeast corner. What is that zone, what's that plan to be?
This area here is-
No, 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 north of the, north of Copper Cove Drive, yes.
That's real residential, one acre parcel?
Yeah, I'm involved with Crossroads Community Church, we meet in the old church down there. We own that land. So is, would that be, is that zone now which would permit the building of a church?
Yes, we'd allow conditional use permit for churches and residential zone property.
Okay, that's perfectly, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, discussion with the commission?
Do they have CCWD water there?
I think it is within the district, I don't know if they actually serve, let me double check. So no, it appears not to be within the water or sewer district. Except for the very northern part of it along, right there. The crosshatches the water and the green is sewer, and I think if I, vice versa, and probably where it's sewer, it's also water. So the green is sewer and water, and the just crosshatches is just water.
Is that sewer lined up to capacity already?
I don't know.
So this recommendation is rural residential on the northeast portion of it, is that right?
Yes.
60 acres, so that would permit 60 lots?
Right.
So, this recommendation is rural residential on the northeast portion of it, is that right?
Yes.
60 acres, so that would permit 60 lots?
Right. And most likely, they're probably being clustered probably in this area here, because it does drop off steeply as you get into the Crete Canyon.
Where they'd have access from Copper Cove Drive?
Yes.
So, it looks to me like much of it is too steep to build on anyway. And so, I think I'm in favor of the staff recommendation.
It's pretty straightforward, in my opinion. I concur with the staff recommendation.
It's not straightforward for me at all. It's sitting right in the middle of a bunch of residences and I'm gonna let you go, Ted.
Is there anything on that? I think you're in your map to give an indication of how steep it really is.
Yes.
So, as much as, in much as most of that land's not even gonna be very usable because of the steepness, the little bit that they have left, we've restricted them down to nothing. I mean, at least they should be able to do something with the flatlands that they do have, and by making the requirement of that split being so large, it takes a lot of ability away there.
I'm not sure I'm following you.
Look at the layout of the slopes of the land.
Right, very steep.
And in the past, when we've looked at these, and we've seen that, oh, there's a whole portion of no build out there, but we found a portion they potentially could do something with. We've given more freedom to that space and-
So, what are you proposing, other than what-
I didn't propose anything. I just threw my idea, my thought out there.
Oh, all right. Because that's basically what Peter's recommended, is that he's-
Forty acres, 20 to 40 acres.
Right, the part that is flat and is buildable.
And out of that 400 and what, 95 acres?
Pardon, for, are, for those, for the flat area?
Okay.
And then the rest, he wants to keep RP.
Right.
That's the way I understand it. So, all the reds RP, and the flat area will be one acre parcels.
One to five.
One to five.
Which is commensurate with the neighborhood.
That's fine. Well, actually, it backs up to a lot smaller, but that's good.
I agree with the recommendation, because too much of that land is not usable for any of that.
We could go skydiving. Could be a business.
So, it sounds like we've got some consensus about staff recommendation on this, Peter?
Okay.
So, we're moving to the-
Could you repeat that? Because there were two different recommendations. One was the one on the sheet, and then one was the 60 acre. And I want to make sure which one-
It was Peter's recommendation, there was those three parcels there around the school site, would be appropriate for rural residential.
And that's what we got the consensus on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're moving on to the Sanguinetti Cattle Ranch. The first one, 64-028-024, and it may be that we want to, kind of like copper, the copper projects, is listen to both of them since they're adjacent to each other, but decide on them separately. So, is there someone that, representing Sanguinettis, that'd like to discuss the land use request?
Ron Kopp, I'm not recommend, I'm not representing him on this particular piece, but I was sitting next to Jenny, and she said that she had a meeting this afternoon and she couldn't go, so that they were just looking at their record with the letter that they sent in for what they were requesting to go over this.
Okay.
She asked me just to reiterate that for her.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to discuss this land use designation? And that would be for both of them?
No.
Just the first one?
Just the first one.
Okay. Okay, all right. So, this is Sanguinetti Cattle Ranch LLC for 1,680, basically, three acres. Anyone? No?
You could better talk about the background first.
Oh, we could talk about the background first. I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Peter?
Well, this is kind of a large tract of land that is on the east side of Oberon's Ferry Road. Sort of a similar situation where we have, you know, fairly substantial expansion of the community, existing developed community area into the ridgeline that sort of separates Copperopolis from Melendez area. It is presently zoned, it's in the Williamson Act, and is zoned AP. Let me go check on that, just to make sure.
1,600 acres?
Yes.
So, yes, this area here is zone agricultural preserve. There's a small piece of it that is A1. And the prior land use designation showed it as being future single-family residential as well as rural or residential center. So, you have five acre parcel, depending on access and water and stuff there, and then potentially half acre parcels. But again, if there's inadequate roads, not sufficient water, then, you know, five to 20 acre parcels may also be. This is the difficult part of making a comparison of what the old general plan allowed and what's, you know, what's proposed now, is that depending on existing or proposed improvements to infrastructure, the land, the density varied within these areas.
And just as I mentioned earlier, the Oberon's Ferry Road is classified as a level of service D, which would, any development would be a 40 acre minimum, not the five.
But the current use of the property is, is cattle ranch.
Any questions of Peter? Right now? No. Okay. So, is there someone that would like to weigh in on this land use designation request? No? Okay. So, back to the commission for discussion.
And this is, this ranch is currently outside CCWD's service area?
Yes.
But CCWD can supply water right across the road?
At least at the district boundaries. Well, it actually doesn't, but it's, you can see it's, this area down here is within the wastewater and water district, and then as you move further north, it's, you know, back up in this area where Copper Cove Drive comes in.
That one's still in the Williamson Act?
So, you got 10 years right there. This is 20 year, this is 20 year plan, and you already got 10 years that you're, to take, to get out of the Williamson Act.
Well, and that's where I was going with that, was that, looking at the general plan amendments as we go through this, that one will have the 10 years, and it doesn't have the infrastructure anywhere around it, so I'm good with the staff recommendation.
I am too. All right. So, we're moving on to the M. Sanguinetti Cattle Company. It's 943 acres, 64-029-049 to 053.
So, this area here, sort of on the nose, Table Mountain, that's right here, you've got front Oberon's Ferry Road and the bridge crossing somewhere down here, and the lake at the southern tip. This is, we've got a public land here and a separate piece of property that's owned by someone else along the river from this there. Met several times with the Appling's representative. They've, I think we talked about this at our first meeting on the map, where they proposed a mixed recreational residential development. We don't actually have an application in front of us, but there's, you know, been discussion about including this in the general plan to allow that project to move forward in some way.
So, Peter, when, when we're looking at the front ones with the lake frontage, how big are those smaller parcels?
Let me check.
So, we're looking, this is a total acreage of 943? Or is that just the agricultural up behind it?
That's the whole thing. So, of that, there's a 40 acre parcel here and an 81 acre parcel here. As part of the total 900 and some acres.
That's all part of the same point that, all that whole point.
Yes, yes.
Including the 17 and the 20 some odd ones to the right.
No, the 17 and the 26 are not a part of the-
Okay.
It includes-
The 700.
These two parts up here.
And when they were here before and spoke?
Well, and I have, we have people too, to speak regarding this request.
The existing general plan showed it as future single-family residential, some community center, as well as residential center. The community center here, residential center there.
That's the old map.
That's the old map, and the new map.
Well, that's the existing map.
Yeah, existing.
What is the dark green?
That's the federal land.
Okay. And the orange is?
That would be-
Or brown.
Commercial recreation.
Okay.
So, the strip up above it, we left under resource production and didn't continue that flow of CC?
Yes.
Okay.
Commercial, commercial recreation here.
It starts to leave that area that has access and already has commercial in it.
And where, you have RTB on here. Where?
Yeah, RP, RTB, and CR.
That was the previous one that we just looked at.
So, scratch that off?
So, right now, they would like to have, and this is, we don't really have a fit for this one. This would be if you're inclined to allow the development that's being requested, this would be probably one of those future specific plan designations that provides for a blend of different uses. We don't have anything that really fits what they would like to do on this property under the current list of land uses. So, I added this commercial recreation and other, because I just, you know, didn't have anything that fit it at the time.
Any other questions of Peter?
Yeah, is there any CCWD water service here?
No.
No.
Same with wastewater?
Right.
Right. It abuts along, you know, Oberon's Ferry Road area here. This is all served by CCWD, but not on the other side of the highway. I mean, there may be a connection for residents, but it's, it's not within the district.
But on this one, CCWD is right across Oberon's Ferry Road?
Right.
As opposed to the Lynn Sanguinetti.
That's correct.
Any other questions of Peter? Okay. Your turn.
Good afternoon. Ron Kopp again. Yes, we did talk about this a couple weeks ago when we were looking at it. You know, our feeling is that this is a very good location. It's right at the front door to Calaveras County. You had mentioned the fact that Oberon's Ferry Road is a level of service D, but that is one of your regional roads that goes, that's a collector road that runs right by this, by this property. So, there is, it does have a lot of traffic on it. We have a lot of frontage that is along that, which can be provided for right of way and future road expansion and other things with that. That's also an area that you're looking to bring the Oberon's Ferry Road Bridge through. So, that was one of the things that facilitated some of the planning of this, of how to take some of those different concepts that you were looking at and see which ones might make the most sense to tie in with the future land planning and development of this overall, overall project. And some of the preferred alignments were, are aligned into this, a potential plan that we would look to, to bring forward. One of the reasons is nothing's been brought forward on this, is, you know, with Sawmill and others, that while you have your general plan and you're going through this update, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to propose something until we know where your, where your general plan is going. So, it's sort of that chicken and the egg scenario, so we've been patiently waiting for you to put the program together. Meanwhile, you know, on a good note, the economy is starting to come back. I've looked at your general plan and a lot of the goals and objectives that you're looking at doing with economic development, trying to get TOT revenue, trying to do some resort and tourism-based components. This, this plan with where it's sitting, with the views over the lake and the riverfront and everything else, we feel is ideally suited for that type of resort development and tourism, tourism-based development, which, in our feeling, if you're gonna develop a mixed-use project, you really need to orient it to some of the resort components and create some of the job creation and other things with it, rather than a straight residential project. This would probably be led by the resort development that we would tie with, and the residential would be, would be secondary that ties in with that. You mentioned CCWD. We've talked with CCWD. Their water is across the street, but at the same time, you know, there's pressure issues, there's storage issues and everything else. So, this project, as we went forward with the project EIR and the other components, we would work carefully with CCWD to create additional storage, which would probably be set up in water tanks and other things to give fire protection and other things that would benefit existing residents that were across the street, as well as this, this future development going forward. So, those are the issues that would be worked out with CCWD as we went forward. You know, when, there's been a lot of comments today about, you know, your general plan and other projects will come forward, but as, you know, Peter's pointed out, you want to address a lot of the issues in the general plan and not just sort of leave it up to the next project to come in and try and change it. I've been in the entitlement business for a long time, and I can tell you, going from an entitlement standpoint that allows some residential development or mixed use, or even with the existing general plan, is much easier to go forward with, much less arduous, time-consuming, much less litigious, if you have some basis, rather than a resource production where everybody's arguing that it's not consistent with the general plan. And we've already heard that that was one of the arguments that was used against the Sawmill project, one, I think Mr. Buckley was up here before, reading some of those points. One of the points was that it wasn't consistent with the general plan, and that, that's a big issue. So, one of the things we would like to see is that there's some overall designation on this site that is consistent with some sort of mixed-use resort development, that has the ability to tie in some of the commercial components, the resort components, the recreation components, going forward. Your CC doesn't really do that, your recreation, commercial doesn't really do that, so it would be good to try and morph something with that. Absent that, you know, then I guess just leave it the way it is, so that you're not, you know, some people have been arguing that you're giving pre-entitlement. Well, you know, leave the existing designation on it, and we'll work with that and go forward with it from there. Putting something in the resource production, you know, sort of this placeholder for the type of development that we're looking at for this, doesn't really work for a placeholder. It just makes it very difficult to try and bring some of these projects forward. And when you look at some of the investment groups and the people that need to bring in a large amount of capital to do a type of project like this, the at-risk component upfront is the hardest money to, to bring together and to try and put one of these projects together. And when you're, the more issues you have to fight with the overall entitlement process, the, the lower probability- the, the lower probability that that project has of, of moving forward. This has not been in the ag element for, you know, it is, the general plan designation is not ag, the zoning is ag, but this was not put in the Williamson Act, so this hasn't been in that for, for a number of years and I don't think it was ever, ever put in that. When you're looking at 20 years of growth, also, I think as Peter pointed out, you know, you, you should be looking at some of the larger big picture. You are going to designate more residential than is, is part of your overall plan and then the market's going to determine where that, where that goes forward with it. When you have a piece of property that's well-located like this with the amenities and everything else that are part of the river and the lake as well as the onsite amenities, this thing we feel is very well-positioned to move forward very quickly. It's not something that, that is 10 years out or 20 years out, it's something that we would start moving forward with after your general plan is adopted and bring that in. Because the people we've been talking to, with the amount of traffic that Yosemite's getting and this other areas, we need residential or we need resort development, we need more hotel rooms up in this area, and that's one that this, this project could help provide. Also, when you compare, a lot of comparisons have been made to the maps three and four as far as putting a lot more land back in to development rather than the resource production. I think as you pointed out this morning, when you compare it to what the existing general plan was, this had designations on it and it's now being moved back to resource production. So we're not taking things out of resource production to add more housing back in, we're dealing with where this was, this was originally. So I think with your general plan, we would like to either see it be left as it is in the general plan or preferably come up with a combination program that works for this site. And there's another, there's some other sites that work very well in your county that that would tie together with for the job growth, the tourism-based components and those, those jobs that are associated with it. And then you can address the environmental issues going forward and how your goals are set up, your objectives and your criteria that are set up in your general plan to make that work. So with that, I would, I would appreciate the ability to move forward with this, to meet some of the goals that you already are looking at in your general plan, but we, we need to have some designations that allow that to happen. Thank you.
Any questions? And I forgot your name, I'm sorry, what was it?
Pardon?
Your name?
Ron Korf.
Korf?
K-O-P-F. One of those German names of four letters that don't go along together.
Yes. Any questions of Mr. Korf at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. We may have some.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
Oh, we have one right now for you, Mr. Korf.
Sorry about that. You're asking for commercial recreational over that entire area of the 900 acres?
Well, the plan that's set up on this, as Peter pointed out before, there's, there's Table Mountain, there's some other steep areas, there's some not-so-step areas. So the plan we've looked at has a lot of open space, trail system, but it also has some golf course components and other things with that. So when you, when you spread those out across the overall master plan and then you have mixed pockets of sort of higher density and then low-density development, depending on where the, the steepness and the views and the other things are with that, as, as Peter pointed out, there's really not a designation that, that works. So until you're ready to come forward and put in your tentative map and do those other components, which will identify much more clearly where those individual areas are and you do the increased environmental analysis on the other components, you really have to come up with sort of a blanket designation that you then move forward and you work within, like we were talking about before with the program EIR versus a project EIR and a tiered approach.
Thank you.
My name is Jack Cox and I'm with the Lake Tullock Alliance. For many, more than 20 years, many of us have worked in the Lake Tullock Basin, have been involved in efforts to try to create a land use plan. I remember taking Terry Bailey, the supervisor then, and Ralph Ray Waller out in the lake to show them the lake being filled in by seawalls being smaller and smaller. And even though it was against federal law with the Army Corps of Engineers, they said nothing could be done. But over the years, we've worked to try to protect the lakeside while supporting some of the projects. Unfortunately, too often that process has been ignored. I might mention that there was never an EIR required for any project on Lake Tullock up until the time we got one required for the lot split and one of the 20 acre parcels. We must protect, first of all, we must recognize that Lake Tullock is the most important asset in our region and it's got to be protected. We must protect the view shed of the lake from becoming one large housing, development, golf course, or whatever it might be. The view of Table Mountain is wonderful and the hallmark of our lake. We must protect our water. Last year's schemes to increase the number of fish in the delta by draining our lake, by draining Maloney's, et cetera, impacted our water supply and our ecosystem. We need land use policies that recognize that shoreline development cannot continue without having an impact on the lake. The lake surface is limited and we cannot develop every square inch of it around it with lake, with houses and boat docks and destination resorts. Two weeks ago, two women were seriously injured in a boney accident on a crowded Sunday afternoon. One woman's in a coma and is sent in Sonora, in Stockton. The fact is, on busy summer weekends, the lake is absolutely jammed. I said earlier this morning, the sheriff's office has counted as many as 187 boats on a lake that they say can handle in a crowded time, 116. Most importantly, the lake is critical to our sensitive ecosystem. I'm reminded of that every day when I see the bald eagles flying over our lake. In a memo to you last week, which I just gave you a copy of, we noted that the land directly adjacent to the lake at the foot of Table Mountain, not Mountain, and Lake Tullock Canyon along with the Stanislaus River are the gateway to the Lake Tullock Basin and should be designated as resource production to ensure a natural view for future generations. We noted there is a proposal to create a resort on parcels of, of this land. We believe such a project as is conceived now is totally inappropriate. The proposed project, if constructed, would destroy or damage the view shed of Table Mountain as the beautiful entrance for thousands of visitors to come not only from locally, but from around the world and around our country. We need, need to maintain the last beautiful view and open space of the Lake Tullock Canyon. The Lake Tullock Canyon goes up through there and winds up for miles. And it's, provides an undeveloped visual experience for the visitor or those of us who live here. It's the last major area that it hasn't been touched, particularly other than five houses at the end. The canyon, the river are that largest remaining untouched open space. The proposal includes a marina or boat access up the top there, at the top of there, right at the, at where the river turns. I've provided pictures for you of that, of that area. That's a beautiful scenic area now, picnic people, they go fishing and everything else. And to change that into a boat access, also, building a timeshare or whatever buildings looking down the lake will totally destroy the open space experience that people would have by such a development. The proposal includes, I said the marine access, but there are two other major projects on the lake which would add more boats to the lake. One, we have Copper Valley, we talked about the way, we have Tuscany Hills. Also, they're talking about a resort, Copper Valley has talked about a resort and other facilities. And I would say that if we need those kinds of things, let's go to where we have adequate amount of land. Building a golf course on Table Mountain just doesn't make sense. I also know that TRIDAM is not aware of any of this proposal and they provided no oversight and they, they are the ones that have the oversight of the, of the shoreline. Bottom line, there is a need for flexibility, we talked about that earlier today. We're talking about flexibility, so we don't know what the future is, but we do know, we do know that this land, for as long as we live and for the next generations, should be safeguarded and remain the way it is. As I said, those of all, those of us that have been working on these issues over the years are not anti-growth, but pro-growth, but done in the right way. We must plan for the future. We work with developers like Tuscany Hills to try to develop a plan that made sense and they took the houses off the shoreline. They eliminated having docks all along the shoreline. Because every time a dock goes in, then, then you have problems and limitations on voting. So while development is important to improve the quality of life in our community, I think we talked about that this morning, it's critical to protect our natural environment and our greatest asset. You remember the, the plans by the, the Sierra Business Council published something called Planning for Prosperity? And what they found is 87% of businesspeople valued the natural environment here as the most important asset to drawing talent in their businesses. So to destroy that, this one natural resource here, that with, that is the entrance and the hallmark of Lake Tullock, creating houses across that thing and development and also impacting the lake with more marinas, et cetera, or boat launching is just one big mistake. So I, I, I just raise, and I know those of us at Lake Tullock are really concerned about its future, but there are ample other areas for development of a project like this, this just isn't one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll see if there's anyone else first and then we'll ask you.
This is more of a general comment. I had made a proposal earlier about attaching the land use designations to a unit limit number like a community center 580. And subsequent to that, Peter made a, a different proposal, future, future specific plan with some specific limits on residential, commercial and recreational. And there was some debate and some concern about those. I just want to make it clear that I think Peter's proposal is a good refinement and superior to what I suggested. So in case any of you were concerned about that, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So would you like to come back up?
Yes.
Ron Korf again. After listening to Jack, I think we're actually in more alignment than, than he thinks. When you look at this plan where it's showing some of the red and everything that's down on that point, that's not where we're showing any development. There isn't any development that's between Table Mountain and, and the lake. When you look up that canyon, we don't have any residential development up that canyon. It's held back and it's held back up the hill. So we're not looking at a lot of docks and things like that that are along there. The same way that we worked with Tuscany Hills and some of the other projects to look at, if there is some access to the lake with a, a small little dock area or something, we're not looking at a boat launching area where everybody just sort of drags their boat down and launches it into the lake. We're looking at a small little marina area in that, in that area that might have like a sand beach where some of the resort people can use. If you're going to create a resort and you're right on a lake and you're right on a river, you have to have some small point of access to it. So with all the frontage that's on that, we're looking at one small area that would have some access to tie in with that. But again, that's all part of working with the neighborhood, with TRIDAM and with those other groups as we're moving forward with the overall development of that plan and the program EIR or the project EIR that's tied in with that. So that's not set in stone at this point right now, but we're also very concerned about the view shed and what's tied in and how that's set up. And so as you come across that bridge and as you see that area from the lake, that was all carefully looked at and that's something that we'd like to sit down with these groups and look at. But if you don't have the ability to even sit down with them, then it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So that's why we're just looking to come up with a mixed-use plan that does make some sense right now, that we can then move forward and work with those groups to, to work out the issues, a lot like they've done on Tuscany and the other projects. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I have one from Mr. Korf. As you envision this project, understanding it's not set in stone, if someone is driving from 108 towards Lake Tullock and you come around the bend and you're looking at the Stanislaus Canyon, you do see a bunch of development around the lake further down shore, but with your project, would there be structures right on top of Table Mountain on the edge of it?
No, there, we would look at a few golf holes that were set up on top of Table Mountain, but there wouldn't be any vertical construction set up on that that would have any, any view shed. But if you can imagine, you know, golf courses are a tough deal these days, but they do tie in with resort development. So if you can create a unique situation, then it, then it does make sense. And when you're standing up on Table Mountain and you have some of the trail systems and things like that that go across it, there's, there's rental pools and there's some environmental issues that have to be worked out on top of Table Mountain, but it's also, we've met with Department of Fish and Wildlife on some other projects that had Table Mountain, portions of Table Mountain incorporated in it, and you can do it. But the view shed's very important and there isn't any vertical, vertical construction that sits up on top of that. When you look at some of the plans that have been set up for the, for the future bridge that goes across, that does cut across and then go in front of Table Mountain across that noose, so that needs to be very carefully designed so it's set up so that that doesn't have a negative impact to tie in with that as well. But to try and go through Table Mountain or go around the backside is extremely expensive and even more disruptive to go, go that way. So there will be some impact just by what you've looked at from, with some of your preliminary plans on, on fixing the O'Burn's Ferry Bridge.
You talked about one point of access on the river or the lake. What point was that you had in mind?
That would be back up at the northern part of the property. What do I push?
Green, green button.
The green button?
Yeah.
With this green button?
Yeah, hold it down.
And then you have to hold your hand still at the same time.
Good?
Okay.
Keep, keep it pressed down.
All right. Okay.
Technology.
There's a little area that's, that's back in here, that's sort of a little natural ravine and, and area back in there that has like a little sand bar and a beach area that it's not visible as you're looking up this portion, but this, there's, there's one resort area that would be set up here and then Table Mountain goes up from there, but that, there's a steep bank and then a flat area and then another steep bank. None of this would be developed, this would all remain open space with some trail systems that would tie in along it. And then there's a small development area that's sort of set back in there.
Okay, but that's way up the river from O'Burn's Ferry Road, correct? Where you're talking about the marina.
Yeah, and it, no, it's, it's not a marina. It's basically just a little dock area. The idea was maybe we do a, a riverboat deal that ties in with the resort, that you can do a dinner cruise or something else that ties in with that. If there's maybe a little, you know, a sand beach area or something that the different, different resort people are using, that's what's envisioned back in there is just creating some amenity that ties in with the river resort, not being, we're not, we're not talking about a marina, we're not talking about docks that are all set up along, along this area.
And you wouldn't even see this area?
You wouldn't see it, no, you wouldn't see it from the bridge or anything else, but as you got up the river, obviously there would be, there would be something there, you know, just like, who knows what Weinstein's going to do on this side of the river over, over here on the Dewalney County side.
Okay, now, what do you have in mind between the bluffs on Table Mountain and O'Burn's Ferry Road?
In here? There's a.
The brown, the brown area.
This area?
Yeah.
As, as I said, we, this doesn't tie into what, anything we've looked at with it. The Table Mountain, when you look at it, is about in this area. This would be, this is part of our open space. This bridge comes across and goes like this and then ties into O'Burn's Ferry Road here. This would remain open space below that. There would be, as it came in, there would be some resort development probably in this area that would be set back from that, but it would be more, you know, low-key with, with tying into that. And then in this area, there would be a mixture of, of different densities of residential along O'Burn's Ferry Road.
Would you mind switching over to topographical real quick, Peter, and then coming back so I could just see exactly where on Table Mountain that, that, that's, that brown you have right there is commercial recreational designation, correct?
That was the, the draft recommendation.
Right.
Basically just following the parcel lines, it probably wasn't necessarily that well thought out.
It wasn't fitting.
When the topo comes up, it's very easy to see what makes sense.
That's why I'm asking.
Trying to find topo. No. It's not in. No. I see. It doesn't show. Five-foot contours are probably going to all blend together at this scale. If you've got something that's a little more than that. Okay, so here, here is the, one of the points of Table Mountain and then it goes back up in this area. The bridge was looking to come across this point.
There we go. Okay, so here is one of the points of Table Mountain, and then it goes back up in this area. The bridge was looking to come across this point or up in here, and then come around like this, and then tie back in. That's where the access road of the Oburn's Ferry Bridge was going to be redone. The one small area we were looking at for the resort was setting here, but you can see with this steep bank and everything else, everything is set back, and there's nothing along here because it is a fairly steep bank and it's heavily wooded, and there's no reason to do that. So it would really just tie in a trail system that would come in and tie along there so that people would be able to use that, and the hope would be that it would tie in with the regional trail system that you would put in the county as well.
And where would the golf course go?
That would be, you can see that Table Mountain's right here. The golf course, the main point, would be kind of in this area, and it would spread out around in here, and there would be a couple holes back in there and a few. You can get up on top of Table Mountain right here, so the idea would be to have one that kind of came along this edge, and then down here, and then over, back up to there, and over, and then back down. So about three or four holes that would tie in with that. But from a view corridor, you wouldn't see them.
When you get on top of that Table Mountain, say on the southeast side, isn't that pretty much solid rock up there?
Yeah, it is.
It's lava.
It's a lava cap, but at the same time, you know, you can import some topsoil, and you just need, you know, a couple feet of topsoil up there to make some of those things work. They're looking at a project at 108, and where you turn off to Yosemite called Yosemite Junction that has a piece of Table Mountain in that, and there's four holes that were part of that. And they did extensive environmental analysis to see how that would work, and that was one of the things. We looked at that analysis to see if it made sense for here. But also, we had talked to Department of Fish and Wildlife about, you know, restrictions and other things with that. And it's doable, but at the same time, you know, you need to be cognizant of what views you're going to see, what the environmental issues are, and how to best go forward. But when you're up on that piece of Table Mountain, you can almost see half dome, you know, from there. So it is a pretty dramatic piece of property that would add a good element to a resort and tourism-based project.
One other real quick one. Can you put back up the 19, the old general plan?
The current general plan.
Yeah, the current, the one that's about to be opened. Sorry. And you're open to it remaining as that?
Well, that's better than setting it up in preserve. I would rather it be a designation that makes sense for that type of tourism-based component, which is sort of a combination of what you've got right now for your CC designation, and I think the, what's the other designation, Peter? The recreation?
Commercial recreation.
Commercial recreation. It's almost a morph of those two designations. So, you know, that would be probably preferable, but in absent of that, this is much better than putting it into the preserve. I can tell you, you know, some of the people were talking about open space and things like that. With this project, it will probably have about 30% to 40% open space as well, just with the slopes and the topography and the different components that are tied in with it. So if you're going to create a destination resort, you're not going to create something that as you drive up to it is visibly unappealing or it doesn't tie in. That's the whole draw of the project. So you want to make sure that it has all of those elements, and that's one of the things we're going to work very hard to make sure happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions with Mr. Koff? No? All right, thank you. Planning Commission.
I'm sorry, Mr. Koff, you had indicated that 30% to 40% of this land would be open space out of the 950 acres?
About 900, yeah.
And with that topography, you only see 30% to 40% of open space?
Yeah, well, I'm not counting the recreation components either that include the trail and the golf course and the other components. When you include recreation into open area, it's significantly higher. So there's a difference of how you want to classify it. Yeah, open area is significantly higher than that.
And when you said 30% to 40%, and I'm looking at that topography, I'm going, really? What are you going to do?
Well, you know, you also saw, if you watch the Olympics in Rio, you know, if topography was a constraint against doing some resort-type developments that are going to give you good views, they wouldn't develop too much Rio either.
They're dealing with their own problems.
Yes, thank you.
Well, yeah, we will have a wastewater treatment plant, you know, so.
So right now, they have commercial/recreational? Recreation, commercial?
Where the red is designated down on that point, you know, that doesn't make sense for us to develop it as that because we were, you know, as I pointed out before, there was just that one little flat area that tied in with it that was going to work with it. So that's why, you know, you need to look at what that overall designation is. And then when we come back in with the project EIR, that's when we have to bring all the environmental and everything else and show you why the specific areas are developed the way they are. So the hard part at this point is come up with just an overall global program that allows the program or the project EIR to go forward and get developed underneath. And that, you know, this, as Peter pointed out this morning, this is just the first step. I can tell you, there's a lot of time and effort, and we heard about the $3 million that Dave Haley was talking about before on the environmental analysis. There's a lot of work that goes into that next level, and there's a lot of meetings with different groups to sit down and work out how those pieces tie in, because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have, you know, a bunch of people running around the lake killing each other either. So that has to be carefully worked out as to how that's going to tie in. But you do want to have some access to that lake, otherwise it's not worth creating a lake resort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think I'm in favor of coming up with a specific plan designation for this area. I understand the concerns about the view shed, which some people would say is just some folks liking to look at other people's property without paying for it. But it is an economic asset to the community. It sounds to me like those concerns would be merely rated if and when this project gets going. The landowners and their people seem to think this is worth pursuing, and I think they know the market better than I do. And it seems to be the kind of a project that they have in mind that would create jobs and would not be strictly residential. And I think we do need that. So I think I'm in favor of pursuing that.
One or two thoughts, either pursuing what Mr. Booster just talked about or considering leaving it as the general plan is right now so that they could pursue the idea and start through the process later. And I do appreciate him talking about the obstacles legitimately, about infrastructure, everything moving forward. But I'm kind of split on which way to go with it because it's huge. I'd like to hear someone comment on it.
I have to agree with a lot of what Kelly said. I do believe that when and if they ever bring a project forward, they're going to protect that view shed because that is what provides the value to that land. So I think allowing them to somehow, because we don't have the FSFR anymore, allowing them to keep what they had currently, when they get ready to bring a project forward, the whole world can come and put their two cents in, but I would like to be able to allow them to leave their zoning or land use the way it was, excuse me. Because we currently have resource production on parts of that with the split that was in here under staff recommendation.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I could see the CR and RTB working, but the RP is going to cause a conflict for them later down the road if they ever do anything with it. I think it has...
If I could ask Mr. Koff a question, what are you looking at as far as overall density for the project and total numbers of units and how much, you know, general area of commercial recreation?
We're looking at probably somewhere between 1,300 and 1,500 homes in that because there would be some mixed density of that. There would be some higher density would have a workforce housing component to it, so you can't eliminate that. And then you would have, we're looking at sort of three different resorts, and the exact size of those would be different, but you don't just want to build one big one, but there would be a golf resort, more of a lake resort, and then a river resort. And so those would have the hotel rooms associated with that. And we've got to do a more intensive market analysis ties in with that as well as some of the timeshare component that would tie in with that, that bring in that revenue along with the resort hotels as well. When you have the resort component, you're bringing in the tourism base that you're exposing them to Twalney County. If you create some of the timeshare element, then the people are staying in a longer way, and then that becomes some of your housing element and your housing people that you're selling to as well as the move-up or the move-down buyers that you already have in the county.
So the reason I asked was just going back to the report, you know, looking at the existing 96 general plan land use designations would accommodate roughly, you know, 2,500 people, and I'm not sure that that's really a better solution than, you know, something that if you're inclined to designate this for some type of future development, I think that the specific plan, future specific plan with some limitations would be a better way to do it than just to revert back to the sort of arbitrary lines of the prior general plan. And so if we had, you know, some sort of upper limit like we were establishing for Samuel Lake was, you know, 580 units and some amount of commercial, that that might be an easier way to look at this as far as the environmental analysis necessary to complete the general plan process.
This project is just looking to have a small neighborhood commercial component to it, you know, with it because we've already got other areas that are designated for that. But you still need to have a little small neighborhood commercial component. But Castle &amp; Cook has done a great job with their facility and everything else, and we want to have that tie in, and we think the tourism-based component would help support that. So, you know, overall, I would much rather see an overall designation on this site that allowed the mixed use of that commercial component with the commercial recreation component. But absent finding something that everybody was comfortable with, you know, leave it like it is. But I would prefer to come up with that designation that would fit this site and a couple others.
For me, leaving it like it is isn't an option because I think it was probably not very realistic or good planning back in 96, and this would be perpetuating that. So that's...
And that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ted?
I was just thinking about the fact that we really need to leave them the most flexibility we can because of the fact that they don't have a plan yet as such. And so if we leave them enough flexibility, let them develop the plan, and between the landowner and the developers determine what they want to do instead of telling them what they should do. So I think the more flexibility we can leave them, the better. Maybe the way it is now.
I like the idea of the specific plan, like you talked about, finding that designation that'll work in there.
That makes sense to me also.
So, and I'm not in favor of it at all for the reasons that I, you know, stated before with a lot of these large parcels and that I think that, you know, it's premature, it's, you know, I guess I really don't need to restate the same reasons, but basically that I don't see the demand. I mean, even if you, I mean, I don't even think we're out of the recession here. We don't live in the Bay Area. You know, it's this kind of development is opportunities or development is too far down the road, I think, for this 20-year window. Added to the fact that you've got road issues, no sewer and no water, you've got plans for a lot of dwelling units that there is no demand for, and then also the, you know, sensitivity in the view sheds of this Table Mountain and the environments because it's not just an asset for Copperopolis, it's an asset for all of us. And so if, you know, you get designated something else, these guys sell it down the road. Maybe there isn't that sort of level of sensitivity. I'm just not, I think it's premature. So I'm in favor of the staff recommendation of resource production.
Maybe some of the reason we're still in a recession here in Calaveras is because we aren't letting like things like this proceed. We aren't providing more jobs for people that are legitimately moving forward.
We have lots of land available for economic development, I think.
And you don't think that is economic development with tourism? You don't think that's going to bring money to our county?
I think that if I were to look at that, a proposal that just had the commercial aspect to it without the housing, I would look at that. We have three times more housing than we need in this area that it's already planned for.
I think the majority of what he was explaining was resort.
But he also said 1,300 to 1,500 dwelling units.
Well, whenever you build a resort, you have to house the workers.
There's lots of dwelling units, there's lots of parcels to be developed to house workers.
Well, I see potential there into our future. I see economic development there as long as it's done right, and it protects the view shed because that is an important aspect of that. And I think that the way that he described it, I would hope that they would move ahead in a responsible manner, and if not, we'll have public hearings, and I am going to support looking at a specific plan.
So I think there's some consensus for that, support for...
And there's sort of an upper limit that we want to put on the amount with 1,500, an acceptable number. That's sort of what I heard was the upper limit.
It's a high number.
It is a fairly high number.
Well, I think we're finished with the, we have one more.
Well, because there are the questions that, you know, we've applied this designation now twice, the site and the Samuel Lake. On Samuel Lake, we said we're going to limit the amount of dwelling units to 580. And did we want to put a limit on this, or are we going to leave it open-ended? That's my question to you.
I think I'd be more comfortable with a limit.
I would too.
I would also. My only question is, I understand this is a different kind of project. It's a commercial resort. I was wondering, is there also going to be some kind of limit on that part of it as far as floor area ratio or square foot of development or something like that? Because when he goes to do the EIR again, he's got to look at some way to do the trip generation, and if we have no idea what the upper limit is for the commercial recreation, it may be challenging to do that.
That's a good point. Thanks. So you guys might want to consider that.
I think that that's something that when we talked about doing this earlier, that Peter would come back with something that we would relook at. Is that a correct statement when you talked about coming up whatever that special was going to be?
Right.
Okay.
But in this case, and I guess I'm going to need to talk to Mr. Haley as well as what the commercial limitations would be on Saddle Creek so that we do have an accurate assessment of what we're actually planning for. I can work with the applicant to, you know, determine what it is that he thinks, you know, this project, and granted, it's in early planning stages, don't know the exact number, but I think there's a capacity that we could come up with. Unless he's able to state that right now, we can write it down and be done with. Unless he's able to state that right now, we can write it down and be done with it that, that you as a commissioner are comfortable with and saying, yeah, that, that seems reasonable given, you know, the location and all the other discussion that you've had today.
I think he was shaking his head no.
No, Mr. Koff.
That you do have a number for us right now? That's what he's saying, shaking his head no.
I'd be glad to work with Peter.
Sure. Okay.
Thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred homes on nine hundred forty-three acres with thirty to forty percent open space seems like a lot. In some commercial and a golf course. I think Mr. Koff ought to refine this a little bit if he can.
Well, we, we have, we, you still have to work out the commercial angle of it too, so.
Yeah, I mean, when you, when you look at it, that's one and a half homes per gross acre, you know, with it. So when you, when you look at some of the different mix on that, it's really going to come, you know, and we're going to have to get into the detailed planning, look at the grade, look at the grades and everything else with that. But that's a, that's a mix. There's an, there's clearly going to be, or not clearly, but there more than likely will be an apartment project and those are built at about fifteen units to the acre. When you look at some of the others, there's going to be one acre lots that are set up on some of the others that are more of your estate residential that tie in with some of the resort components. So it's, it's just a mix and a, and a level right now, but you don't want to limit it too much because you also have to pay for the amenities and the other things you're putting, you're looking at. C C W D wants a lot of water storage. You were talking about the constraints on Burns Ferry Road with some of the road improvements and everything else, and you need to have enough economics to, to pay for those improvements that are going in as well. So you don't want, I don't think you want to limit it too much at this point, but then when you get into the, the program or the project, you're going to have to answer all those questions. So they're, they are going to be answered.
Does the thirteen hundred and to fifteen hundred, does that include just single family homes or does that include like apartment units?
That, that was the mix of all the, all the residential homes, not the resort rooms themselves, but that was the mix of all the residential, which was everything from higher density apartment to one acre estate lots.
So if you had a fifty unit apartment, you're counting out, it's fifty for purposes-
That's fifty units.
One other quick question on this piece of property here that's sort of between the river and the B L M land. Do you, is that a part of the overall project? It's not owned by Sanguinetti, but is something that you intend to try to acquire as a part of this? Should that be included as a part of this?
It's my understanding it is owned by the Sanguinettis. It just, but the green piece is not, so.
Right.
But if it's, if it's not, then it's, it was not a piece that we developed. There was just a trail system that was running through that dark green piece and B L M has, has allowed that in the past. So that was one of the things we were looking at. But we weren't developing the piece below that anyway.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure how you would ever develop it anyhow.
Yeah.
So it sounds like you're going to be working with-
Yes.
Both on the specific plan, people on floor ratio, somehow to capture some of the commercial space.
Some upper limit so that we know what to base our environmental review on.
Right.
Yes. Okay.
So the last one is Jeffrey and Yvonne Rotan in fifty-nine acres, sixty-four dash zero-two-nine dash zero-six-four.
So this is just across the road from the property we're talking about. This is the northwest end. It's this piece of property right here. Turn that off. It's distracting. Present zoning is A one and the land use designation from nineteen ninety-six is the residential center. It is not within C C W D at this point in time. However, it is adjacent to lot served by C C W D on, on two sides. This is probably one area and maybe even the parcel to the north that could be considered for some type of transition, one five acre. It, we were talking a total of fifty-nine acres here, so maybe another thirty-five acres on that side there, which is not, not been, there's been no land use request for that. So I think just looking at the, the pattern of developments that we're looking at here. We've got the twenty acre parcels to the north. My understanding that that was a fairly hard fought issue some years ago on the appropriate density for that, that, that project within that area. So that's the, the property we're talking about. And I think Mr. Rotan is here.
Go ahead.
Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Jeff Roten and my wife and I have been in Copperopolis since about nineteen ninety-one. We bought a vacation home. We spent a lot of weekends and summertime up here. And then that was in poker flats, then built a house in Connor Estates. This piece of property here, you'll probably recognize as a, it's actually a fifty-nine acre parcel. It was previously owned by Limkey Construction. He had two development proposals for this land. One of them, I believe, was two hundred and fifty-four unit, single residence. And the second one, which went pretty deep in the process, was about a hundred and seventeen units, which complied with the general plan and its residential center land use designation. The property is surrounded by not only sewer but water, electrical, cable, phone, everything around it. Unfortunately for Limkey Construction, he fell into the downturn of the residential development market and lost the, the property to the bank. I negotiated with this, the bank owner, which was Delta Bank, or the property owner, which was Delta Bank, and purchased the property after doing a lot of research. And I heard that spoke of earlier. I, I feel for what you guys do. I've been there. I was on a planning commissioner for four years in San Ramon. So I know what you're up against and I've been through the general plan process. I've got a stack of documents of probably about a foot and a half on, on this property, going back to the late, say mid nineteen eighties. So I did a fair amount of research on it. I purchased it with the intent of how it was zoned based on the current general plan, the nineteen ninety-six general plan. And I'd like to walk you through a couple of things that, that came, came up along the way. I attended the Copperopolis Community Plan Advisory Committee meetings early on, right after I purchased it. And at the time, I think the lady's name was Rebecca Willis. And I approached her after the meeting to discuss this particular property. And unfortunately, she had no clue what I was talking about. I got a, a kind of a deer in the headlights look and I thought, boy, that's strange. She doesn't know this, this particular property and what's been going on with the development projects that were proposed. Anyway, I walked away from that and kept monitoring what was going on. Had some issues of getting updates on when meetings were occurring and that kind of thing. But along the way, I started monitoring what was happening. So if you take a look in, March twelfth in two thousand and fifteen, I sent a letter to Mr. Maurer after a phone conversation we had and to the Board of Supervisors regarding and objecting to the land use designation maps in the general plan update regarding this property. Pages two and three show the, the letters that I sent to, the email and the letter that I sent to Mr. Maurer and the Board of Supervisors. The, the mapping issue, when I spoke with Mr. Maurer, was possibly, was described as possibly a program algorithm error where when the color shading, and you'll see it changes as it goes along here, picked up the zoning as opposed to the land use designation in the general plan. So I thought, well, that's a good thing because that's easily corrected. However, watching the mapping process move forward, that never changed and that, so I'm not sure what took place there. In, early this year, I had a conversation with Mr. Maurer to get updated on the process where we were with the property and in particular, as it moved forward in the general plan. The, if you look on pages four through seven, you'll see that in nineteen ninety-six general plan, this is designated as residential center on roads with a base level service of A, B, or C, half acre density with district water and sewer, which it has on all three sides of the property. That's up Sanguinetti Drive, on the back corner, you can't really see it there, but I believe it's Bluffview Road and Connor Estates Drive, which feeds Calypso Bay, Connor Estates and Peninsula Estates. This project was known as Sanguinetti Estates for those of you that recall the name or want to look into this further. As we look along, if you look at page eight, you'll see an aerial view of the, the project or correction, of the, the property and the surrounding homes. Moving on, going to general plan draft update number two, you'll show that it now shows the property as potential development reserve area, pages nine and ten. And you'll see that they put an asterisk on the property that in question here. There's several of them, but mine was one of them. General plan update number three and four show the property now as production resource. So my hope is to get it back to the original designation, what it was when I bought it. I think this property, if this doesn't designate itself as an infill project, I don't know what does. There was a lot of community uproar, including myself, when this project came forward with two hundred and fifty-four units. That's not something I'd want to see as the landowner. But in compliance with the general plan, when he came forward with a hundred and seventeen, it does make sense. He complied with it. Unfortunately, he was unable to complete it. I don't have any current future plans to develop at any time soon, but my thought process is I would almost like to see this be like a fifty-five year, an older community, something along those lines, or even an assisted care facility. Having spent some time recently in, in one of those, I could see the need for the, the community to, to have that ability close by with family and friends. Again, I have property history going back to the nineteen eighties. It was always anticipated as a development property, even when the, the original land portions were divided up to create Connor Estates and Peninsula Estates. Those agreements and access agreements were made with the property owner of the time to have a easement for ingress and egress into off of Sanguinetti Drive to the property. Any questions?
The nineteen ninety-six land use designation is residential center.
Correct.
Right? If I look at page five of, of what you've handed us, in the middle of that, it's a, it's a forty acre density on roads with a base level of service of D, E, or F. Now, do you know, do you remember what the level of service was when you purchased this property?
I don't know on the roads. I know it was when the plan went in for Sanguinetti, when Sanguinetti Estates was proposed, it was designated, designated as a half acre density, district water, B sewer on roads with A, B, or C. I don't remember what the, what the designation was.
And is this property within C C W D's district?
I don't know that for sure. Peter just said no. I find that hard to believe because it borders all three areas of that property. And I did contact them early on when I purchased the property, find out what the hookups would be and, and that kind of thing moving forward. And that had all been, it was recognized that there was a possibility of future development there and Limkey Construction had, had already gone through that process when he was given his proposals.
Because if I'm reading this correctly, under the nineteen ninety-six plan and this designation, if you're depending upon groundwater and septic, it's a five acre density minimum.
Correct. And there's water hookups for this property on, actually, it's on the corner of Sanguinetti Drive and Bluffview Drive, Bluffview Road, sorry. Electrical also comes from that connection there. There's a underground transformer that's been installed in the, in the corner right across from Sanguinetti Drive and Bluffview Road.
So all of the, the C C W Copper Cove water, that's sewer and water. Those are all sewer and watered properties?
So it's not currently within the district and that restriction on parcel size, you know, would be if they were to propose as a part of their project to annex and extend the sewer district and they can meet those requirements and C C W sees, yes, we can provide those services, then they would be able to meet the half acre density.
Which hasn't happened yet on this-
Which hasn't happened because there's been, you know, well, since the, except for the prior projects. Apparently the first one exceeded the, the half acre density, so they revised that project and brought it back down to approximately, you know, two units per acre, which would be consistent. And they were proposing public sewer and public water as a part of their project. I don't know about the road situation.
Well, which is now a level of service D, which would limit any parcels to forty acre minimum.
And I don't know if there's any ability to make improvements to that road as a part of this project to relieve that level of service.
Right. Any questions of Mr., is it Rotan?
Roten.
Roten, right now. We may have some later.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else with us that would like to discuss this land use designation request?
Colleen Platt, just a question, a couple of questions for clarification. The requested land use is shown in the chart as R L D, which would be-
One to six units per acre.
Up to six units per acre. So that would allow three hundred and fifty-four lots. So that would allow a pretty big project there. And just in that, in either that or any other designation you might choose, I don't know if you, it would be more suitable to go with R R or something like that. I don't know. But would the assisted, assisted living center, I wrote down, I couldn't read my own notes, assisted senior facility or something he mentioned, would that be allowed in a residential designation like that? Because, I mean, that sounds like a good idea. Just asking. Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you have anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Roten?
I'm just trying to-
Okay, thank you.
Other than- I guess the only thing I would like to add is that I, I did a lot of research on what the Board of Supervisors were discussing about this project when it was Limkey Construction. And it was clearly going to go forward had the, or don't know for sure, but it, it appeared that it was going to go forward. The hundred and seventeen homes that were planned, when I look at the plan, I have it here with me if anyone would like to see that plan. It was not something that I thought was desirable. I think it was his right to, to construct it in the way that he was going to, but lot size was a little bit on the small side as far as I was concerned.
And that, but that project didn't have access to sewer. That wasn't a project with sewer and water either.
Yeah, it was going to- Yeah, it was going to be attached to the sewer and water that surround the property.
Oh, so that previous owner had some?
I'm not sure. But that was the plan. And maybe Peter has more information on where?
Not from the specifics of that, but in 117, at 59 acres would be just two units per acre. So it just met the maximum density requirements of the general plan. So it avoided them having to go through a general plan amendment under the old, the current general plan. But I believe the original project had?
254, it was the original project.
So that was obviously quite a bit more than what would be allowed. And I don't know if that included a general plan amendment with that application.
There was a lot of community meetings about the project. And then it was agreed upon that, at that time, that he would reduce it down to the 117, which would comply with the general plan. And that's the direction that they were headed. Contrary to what's being said here, and it could be completely different in San Ramon, but a general plan amendment is no easy task. I have no idea what it's like to get done in the county. But I know in the city of San Ramon, it was near impossible to get done. And that's what I'm trying to avoid. It's just, I purchased the property with that land use designation and I'd like to see it continue that way. And again, when you even look at the map there, if that doesn't comply with an infill project, I don't know what does.
It's just that it's infill with a lot of constraints between the sewer and the water and the road, you know, being?
I'm not seeing it, actually. I see you got access from Auburn Ferry Road. There's a driveway out there.
It's got a limitation unless it's, unless you bring up its level of service to beyond something higher than a D, you're limited to 40 acre parcels.
And I, and I know that this was all discussed before and without any issues or that kind of comment coming forward, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. What do you guys want to do? Pardon me? Yeah. You are on the finish line here for today.
I'll let him think for a second. I'm going to speak a little bit.
Good, all right. We don't have a specific order. You can go ahead of them all the time.
I do see the road constraint. But the, the water and sewer constraints would be up to CCWD to tell you whether they're constrained or not at that point. He's right next, he's bordered on three sides. He is correct. It's whether they can provide service and the cost of service, whether you can move forward. So that constraints, not up to us. The road is a D. So I would tend to agree with you on that. I'll leave it at that for now.
Sanguinetti puts in a resort down the road. That road would be improved and then he's got the ability to move forward. The improvements are going to have to come if what we approved here today happens.
I think the burden of, of that road being up, being brought up too far would bear on everyone building on it or expanding on it as they went too. So I, I think it.
As a developer, that would be his options to if he wanted to pay and proceed in that direction. I'd love to see the road improved.
There's a lot of things I would like to see improved.
Let's hear it.
Well, just a personal observation. I drive that road quite a bit. I don't know how it got classed LOSD. It's not that bad. You can travel on that to speed limit practically all the time. It sure looks like an infill project to me. When I'm with Ben, I'm not too sure how to deal with the water, wastewater issues. It's obviously pretty darn close. I mean, I think there ought to be something other than resource production on this. I'm not too sure what that should be. I'm not sure it ought to be 117 lots.
If you go to RR, that takes it down to one acre lot. So it'd be 59. And that lot above it? Never heard from anybody on that because both of those, to me, look like infill. It's one of those situations where if you say, okay, this isn't resource production, the one above it is in the same scenario.
Yeah, there'd be a good argument that, that, you know, both those parcels could be changed or should be changed to something other than resource production. And you've got 20 acre parcels to the north of the other one. So, you know, some transition between those two might be appropriate.
Yeah, if you did RR and they wanted to do some sort of a care facility, that wouldn't fit in there. Senior housing wouldn't fit in there. Because then you'd be limited to one house per acre, correct?
Density would be one unit per acre. I think, you know, the, these care facilities are interesting, interesting challenge for land use designations and zoning because they're sort of a blend of residential and commercial. We typically see them in more urban settings where there's higher density or commercial.
You're pretty far from healthcare services.
I, I don't know that he's saying healthcare services. Well, yeah, I guess you would. It would still, you're 20 minutes from Sanora.
I think I'd dial a ride.
Well, there's a prompt care facility right there. It's a commercial center at Copper Cove Drive.
I think when you think of seniors, though, whenever they think of a senior center area, they need to be closer to medical facilities because driving is a challenge at times for them. I think that there is this humongous need for our senior housing. I mean, this county is lacking severely in that. But so I think it's infill. I think pushing it to, I mean, he's going to have a lot of work ahead of him with this project, but that's on him, not us. He's just asking to reserve his land use designation. I, 300, when it was, where it's at, he's asking for RLD, which would bring us up to, what did we say, 352? That to me just, it just seems like a lot of overflow in there.
Well, it would be a range from, you know, one to six units per acre. So it'd be anywhere between 59 and 59 times six, 352, I guess is the number. So.
Seems like Card R is more appropriate with that 20 acre parcels up ahead. No?
I'm sort of ambivalent, not really ambivalent, I'm not sure. I can see that, you know, the, the prior designation allowed potentially, if they could fix the road and service issues, two units an acre.
Well, that's, that's if they had public water and sewer and level of service better than D.
Right, correct. Yeah, so if they could solve those infrastructure issues, they could get up to two units an acre.
And so far, none of those are solved.
Not today because we don't have a project in front of us. And that would be something that we would have to look at when a subdivision came in. The first thing we do is circulate it to Public Works Department, circulate it to CCWD, all the other agencies, get their comments back, what's it going to take to serve this project? And then they say it's going to be a, you know, $18 million line extension to provide water at that density. Or, you know, $40 million road improvement project. So then the developer asks away, can I, you know, will it still pencil out for me?
Which puts a constraint on them possibly in the future. So it could just remain a bare piece of land, possibly.
So, but I just want to, the previous project is not all that relevant, right? I mean, I'm just getting what Lisa's suggesting maybe is that
it's relevant in the fact that he purchased the property because he thought that's what he could do. But that's very relevant. But looking at it in today's standards, it just seems to me that, it's a tough one.
Well, because that, I mean, it's.
I think if we look at it in the context of infill, constraint wise, there, there is public service facilities nearby. Whether or not they're sized to the point that they could just easily hook up to it, I don't know. We don't have that kind of detail in front of us. They are on a main road. You know, whether the constraints that cause it to be D, can those be solved as a part of this project? Again, I don't know. But it seems though, you know, given the topography, given the location, that this would be sort of a logical infill or gradual expansion area for future housing in Copperopolis. As opposed to some of the ones that are further out on the extremities of the community. And it doesn't have the, you know, the physical and natural resource constraints as a site here that we said, you know, that just doesn't seem appropriate to develop that area. Again, we don't necessarily need the land. We've got sufficient land to accommodate future growth. But if we're looking at an area that says, okay, well, where would be the logical next step in expansion? This is probably as good as any location within that region that's not otherwise committed to some other use or constraint. So I could see it being either RLD or RR. This lower one, at least Mr. Roten's property here. The other one there, maybe that's better for RR or RTB as a way to transition. And remember, we've just said that this area here is suitable for a fairly good-sized residential recreation use. So it would be surrounded on all sides by some type of future development.
Well, to the north of this, it looks like it's 20s and that's probably because it's, it's lakefront.
Yes.
And then to the west of it, it's, and south, it's little bitty parcels. This is somewhat in between. It doesn't have lakefront. I'm, I'm thinking either RR or RTB would be appropriate.
Five.
So are you suggesting one of the others so we could?
I think given that it is infill, I would, I would prefer it were RR, one acre.
Okay, discussion? Kelly's got a?
I, I think I could go with infill at RR.
RR.
Okay, and that for both these parcels or just?
I think the other one should be 10 acres. If you're going to, that would be Mike.
Well, because it would transition from one to five to 10.
Because those are 20s.
Right, these are 20s up here.
Yeah.
You've got small lots here and then something over here.
I'm good with her suggestion.
So RR, RTA?
Yeah.
Okay.
RTA's the 10s, right?
But we need other votes because that's only two.
Fives, no, you already have a lot.
I thought I heard everyone said RR.
There were four of them.
Or the RTA?
Oh, yes.
Oh, on the top one?
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine.
No, but did everybody else agree?
Yeah, I think they did.
Yes.
Yes, they did. Okay.
So that concludes the list. I know there's at least one other person here in the audience that wanted to probably talk about their property. And there may be others that also, that I didn't have on the list. So we might want to open up. Is there any other properties that we should consider?
Okay. Is there anyone?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to give a little letter. So I am not really prepared today to discuss our property. I just wanted to get on the agenda. I was assuming that there was a general public comment period after your meeting.
There is.
My name is Kathy Morrissey. I am part of the Morrissey Ranch. We have an approximately 5,000 acre cattle ranch east of Auburn Ferry Road. The parcel that I am going to be addressing in our letter is, I have the APN number if you're interested. It is APN number 53-014-018. And approximately 15 years ago, we started looking at developing this piece. We were very, very active in the Copperopolis community planning, attending years and years of meetings. We have done quite a bit of developing of this particular parcel in the sense that we have survey maps. We did do a biological survey and archaeological survey as well. Some of the things that we were looking at and would like to continue to entertain looking at with this parcel include, but are not limited to, assisted care facilities. As some of you might know, my husband is a physician. He is nearing the end of his practice and career. But we are looking at spending more time up here and have looked at and actually discussed with St. Joseph Hospital in the past the possibility of doing a multi-step assisted care facility. So that is something that we have done preliminary research on. We also spoke with the Diocese of Stockton about the potential of putting in a church with a school. Met multiple occasions with the real estate department for the Diocese of Stockton. We also, more recently, met with BLM as well as some other developers within Calaveras County regarding putting in an access road to New Malonus Reservoir. We all know that Lake Tolak is horribly overcrowded. And one of the best long-term solutions to that would be to provide access to New Malonus. And there is currently no way to access New Malonus from the west side of the reservoir. We did, as I said, we met with BLM, walked the property and talked about it at great length. And that's something that is feasible to do. So those are just some of the potential options that we visited in the past and are interested in continuing to research and look at.
So you referenced you have 5,000 acres, but the specific parcel you're talking about?
It's approximately, yes. And that, everything else, our goal, and I think in sitting through two days of listening to these meetings, it's very interesting, some of the old Calaveras County families who purchased property for many different reasons. Some of them are active farmers. Some of them lease their land, as we do to people who run their livestock. We don't want to see that change. We want to maintain the bulk of our ranch as it is. It's beautiful. That's why we purchased it. But we also purchased it as an investment, an investment in our family's future as well as the future of Calaveras County. And we would like to work together to see that it is done in a smart, logical fashion. But I can tell you that it is very expensive to maintain these large ranches. And sometimes that does come at a price. And the price for us is that we are going to have to do something with part of it in order to maintain it for the next 100 years. So that's basically a very brief summary of what I will be outlining in a letter and would like to get on the agenda.
Okay. We're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Do you want to, do we want to give a report? And then we'll come back to public comment for the end or kind of like our schedule or what we're doing or?
So I am hoping that next week we can wrap up the rest of the county and any other requests. There have been a couple that we had to skip over because the owners weren't available or we were questioning whether or not the landowner had the opportunity to really comment on the proposal changes. Working on contacting those individuals. I think that if we have enough time next week, the appeals don't take too long, that we can wrap up the review of individual parcels next week. That's, that's my hope.
So in addition to this, we have appeals? Is that where there's some?
We've got two appeals scheduled for next week.
Okay.
That would be our regularly scheduled meeting. If we can't wrap everything up, then we can continue on. I know that the meeting of the 22nd is packed with regular agenda items, appeals and other projects. So we will not be talking about the general plan on that date. What I'd like to do is, once we've completed the review and all the changes we made, package it all up, bring it back to you, any text changes that we've talked about, make those, clean up, you know, a couple of little loose items that we've come across, you know, reference. clean up, you know, a couple of little loose items that we've come across, you know, references to other policies that don't exist anymore, those kinds of things, so that there'll be a final motion by the commission to forward your recommended draft of the general plan onto the board of supervisors. If we could do that in September, I would be ecstatic.
Okay. So next week, those that were floundering out there or that came in last minute that we said we'd be, or were on hold, those are the ones that, if they were on the list, we should contact if they were in our district and ask us to please contact them when the time came?
Right. So we've got...
And we still have ones we just haven't gotten to?
Five, six that we bypassed, and we now have... We've got a pretty long list. It might be two days worth still.
Depends.
Probably got about 15 to 20 other sites. I don't think they'll be quite as involved in the discussion as we had today. Some of those I've already included in the map, and we can just say, yeah, good job. But others will still, you know, the people want to have their, their opportunity to convince you that their request makes sense. So it's looking like probably the next two weeks, we should probably plan on that unless for some reason you can't meet on the 15th. If we can do that, we can wrap up on the 15th, and then we can bring maybe a final action back. I sort of hate to have another special meeting just for a single action, but we'll, I'll see if we can work it in on the 22nd. Probably, you know, we'll just have to figure out where we're at at that point in time at the end of the next two weeks.
Okay.
If for some reason we can get through everything next week, then...
Who knows? It could happen.
And I can, you know, then do the final wrap-up. It's probably going to take a couple of weeks to make the map changes and get them out there in enough time that people review says, yes, that's what, that's what we did.
Right.
But I think at some point in time, you're going to need to say, we're done. We've cut off the requests. You can take it up with the board if you want to, or, you know, but, but we are done making amendments to the map.
Right.
If it makes any difference to anybody, I will not be available on the 29th.
Same thing as I told you earlier, Peter.
Which is not a regularly scheduled meeting.
That's not a regularly scheduled meeting, so that would, and it may be that we just have to wait for that final action in the forthcoming October.
Because for me, it's the 15th. I, we'll see if I can work it out, but I may have the potential of not being able to be here on the 15th.
Okay. Public comment period.
I just, I recognize some people aren't going to be able to make maybe some of the meetings. I think if we could avoid making tentative decisions about their district while they're not here, I think that would be good. So if there's any way to organize those, so if Lisa can't be here, that we're not discussing Lisa's district behind her back, we could...
Then I can't get accused of favoritism if I'm not here, huh? That's not a bad thing.
It's a good idea. We'll see if we can...
For the most part, that's what's left, though.
Yeah.
Is my district?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're looking basically at the Highway 4 corridor, so around Angel's Camp, and then...
There's some...
There's a few...
But the majority is.
You know, the six or so that we skipped over for a variety of reasons are elsewhere, but the majority of them are the 4 corridor.
Anyone else? Public comment? No? All right, I guess we're adjourned.
That's it?
See you next week.